All right, welcome everyone and good morning. Let's start off and if you'll join me and stand we'll have a prayer and do the pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, we come today to handle county business and we ask for your guidance and direction on each item, whether it's large or small. We know that it impacts not only the citizens of this community but those who pay the tab through their taxes as well as employees and we ask, Father, that you grant us that wisdom we need to make the absolute best decision in each case. We pray for our servicemen and women. We pray for our first responders. You constantly watch over them. We thank you for our veterans that have served and we pray for them as well. Thank you for how you blessed our community. We ask for your continued blessings. Bless the leadership, bless the citizens, bless our economy, Lord. We turn this meeting now over to you in Christ's name, amen. This is our 11th, excuse me, our first meeting of the month, the 11th day of February 2019, 9:00 AM. We've got quite a, well, maybe not too much to cover, but we do have a meeting with UMR regarding our county-funded health insurance here, starting up about 10:00 to 10:30 and we've got some elected officials and department heads that will be joining us about 10:30. So I'll try to move swiftly through this agenda. Item number one, public comment time. Anyone have anything that they would like to address the Commissioner's Court on that is not on the agenda? All right, that said, we'll move on to item number two, consider and possibly approve minutes from our January 28th meeting. That was our last meeting of the month of January. Motion's made by Commissioner Parker for approval of that set of minutes.
Second motion.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye. Item number three, consider and possibly approve the purchase of a new IBM server. I don't think any of you were on the court the last time we bought one of these, perhaps Commissioner Riddle, but we have Sean Bryan with us today from K-Bro and we have had a Technology Committee meeting. And Sean, welcome. Thank you for coming. Who's your assistant? Would you introduce us?
This is Tiffany Bryan, my wife.
Hello Tiffany.
Yes.
Y'all are moving up.
She's sitting in today, yeah.
That's great.
We're trying to improve the atmosphere.
There we go.
It's working.
All right. We've got a situation now where our IBM, I'm gonna let you talk, you do it a lot better than I do.
So every five to seven years, you have to replace the server that your county hosts all of its software on. And we're right now, typically we just, it's kind of just a paper pushing thing, you have to move forward with it. The reason why is because you lose your hardware maintenance on it, after a certain amount of time, they'll no longer support it. So if something goes wrong with it, we can't repair it. So the two options that we have this year, which is different from the past, is you have local option, which is what we've always done. And then you have the cloud-based option, which is new. We have seen NetData do this a few times, but honestly, I'm gonna advise or recommend to the court, based on the technology committee meeting, where we weigh a lot of the pros and cons, that we stick with local for now.
When you say local, tell these guys, do you mean that our real tech savvy, what does that mean?
Sure. So local hosting just means it's physically located here, over at the annex. That's just where the server is located and all of its peripherals and the attached devices. So cloud hosting means it's hosted by NetData in software's range. So it just goes across the internet effectively is what that means.
We talked about that concept as recently, as long ago as a year ago, and we even upped the speed of our internet connection and you and I talked at length about converting over. And your reservations that you shared with me and the Technology Committee, just share with these guys why you think maybe we're not quite ready to do that.
So we are, we are ready on the hardware side of things as far as security is concerned. That's really not an issue for me. Where I'm really concerned is the unknown. Only seeing NetData do this a few times and our company personally, not having any other counties that have moved over to the system yet, I would like to see this play out in Hawkins County who just approved to go to their cloud hosting. I'd like to see them do it first, honestly. That's most of my concern. The other part of it too is it is a little bit more money. It's not a lot more money, but it's anywhere between, I would say, $7,000 and $15,000 over the lifetime of the server to do that. My primary concern is, right now you're Sheriff's Office and I'm glad Tim is here, not saying it, but right now, if Tim or any of his guys has problems, they can call us and we can come out in the middle of the night and take care of the system. NetData claims to have a, an option for that, for you to call on the weekends, but I don't know that that's ever been verified. So mostly I'm concerned for his office and if something goes down and them being down for an extended period of time, whereas we typically have them up pretty quick. Do you know, have you guys ever called NetData on the weekend?
No, we've been on the other end of the street.
Yes. So that's another concern of mine. I'd like to see how that holds up. I know that the Technology Committee was greatly concerned with being able to get ahold of them in a timely manner and we just don't know if that would happen or not if we moved to the cloud hosting.
Five years from now, you'll have some of your other clients that have made that conversion, you'll be able to ask them, how has their service been? And then you'll be able to recommend to us, hey, let's go forward with cloud conversion and we'll do that perhaps for five years.
And I do have, I have talked to some of the other counties that have done it. They say that this, you know, that it was a fairly seamless transition, which is good. However, I'm not sure what kind of infrastructure they're used to working with. For example, you guys have a gigabit network where they used to, a 10100, which is kind of the older style, which is pretty common sometimes with counties who don't have funding for technology. And if they were and they moved over to the system, it may not have seemed much different than before. There's a lot of technical parts on it and I don't want to bore you guys too much, but essentially, there's a lot of unknown variables and until I see Hopkins or Cass or one of the other counties move over to it, personally, I would like to keep this county as it is because things seem to be running just fine here.
I had emailed you guys some estimated cost comparison between the cloud-based system and the local server system. And again, like Sean said, the cost over a five-year period is similar, however, the cost of going with a new server right now hits us pretty hard in year one and then it backs off a little year two through five, whereas the other one is more level. So we're talking about, go ahead and share with us the dollars aspect of this.
Honestly, I don't have that in front of me. I do have it, I can access it. This part is a little bit confusing simply because it doesn't mention year six and seven, which sometimes happens. You'll have IBM extend the EOL, which again is the end of life for that server. They'll say, we're gonna add on some extra maintenance so you don't have to do anything. You just pay a small nominal fee to be able to keep that system for another year or two. And so you could save more than what this paper shows, but effectively you have your first year, this is just all your local hosting, okay? This is the option we're recommending. Carl, you'll have to have your first year at $63,885. That's to get the server here, to get everything in. That's gonna take about six weeks to do. There are a few other things that may extend it another week or knock off a week, but about six weeks is usually average when they have everything rolled over and taking place. Obviously, that's after we give them an approval to do so. Year two drops to $13,500. Year three is $13,500. Year four is $18,000 and then year five is $18,200. I don't know why there's a slight increase there, I can talk to Dustin about that. Versus the cloud hosting, and the one thing that's nice about cloud hosting, and I'll say to their advantage is, usually get consistent pricing. Now typically, because we use some cloud hosting with some of your other services, just not with NetData. Now typically, cloud hosting tends to be a little bit cheaper and it all does, it kind of depend on what system you're moving over. But in this case, you do have a more consistent bill every year. It would be, your first year would be $30,000 instead of the 63. Second year's 25 instead of 13. 25, 25, 25, so, or 26 I guess roughly, 25, 985. So that's how that is. Now if you hit year six and year seven, you're gonna have that 25, 25 again, whereas local hosting, you're gonna, you're gonna have, you know, between 13 and 18, depending on what they charge you, or less. I don't know how that billing structure works, so.
What else can we ask?
So in essence, I'll just kind of conclude. We effectively had determined that the local hosting is a little bit cheaper and safer for the Sheriff's Office specifically, and obviously, we've done this 100 times. I mean, I've been here nearly 17 years and we always go with the system whenever we do it. I've done it several other counties. It's not a big deal, it's tried and true, it's existed since forever, and we know that everything here is going to be kind of like a seamless transition for you guys, which means you're not gonna be down for very long. They actually schedule the local hosting overnight when they do these things, when they do these transitions, whereas the cloud-based hosting would bring the county down for maybe a day or two during this process. Cloud hosting, just conclusion was simply, it was slightly more expensive and a lot of unknown variables. And that was really what it came down to. There's not really a whole lot of difference in terms, from your guys' perspective, but from our perspective it is. Honestly, it's a little less work on me if you go to the cloud hosting, but we want to make sure that you're up and running and I like to have my hands on personally. But again, Hawkins County is our county, they're going to the cloud system. Cass hasn't decided yet, so we're kind of in discussions about that there.
Who are we buying this server from? K-Bro or from?
This server will go directly to NetData, yeah. No money here is gonna pass my hands at all. This is merely just something for me to present to you so that you can make a decision.
All right, high-tech subject. Anybody have a question on challenge? Sean?
Are we out of our warranties, extensions on what we have now, for sure?
Yes, sir. So there, you should be getting a bill if you haven't already for, it'll buy you a little bit of time so that we can get this transition into place, but yes, sir, it's, I don't have the specific date in front of me for the EOL for here because I have so many of those that I have to deal with, but it's now, so.
If we approve this today, you'll go ahead and initiate the action and six weeks from now we'll.
Yes, sir.
We'll install the deal.
Dustin will probably just send something over for you to sign and you send it right back in. Once that happens, they'll start their process and then we'll coordinate with NetData to get everything transitioned over. No additional money on my part, we take care of everything. You've already got that agreement with us, so.
All right, questions or ready for a motion? Commissioner Riddle makes the motion to purchase the new IBM server. All in favor of purchasing this new IBM server and maintaining local service as opposed to transitioning to cloud service through K-Bro? Say aye.
Opposed.
All right, thank you very much. Anything else we need to talk about while you're here?
Not that I'm aware of, but if you want me to make the list, I'm sure we can schedule a meeting.
All right.
Thanks, Kevin.
All right, thanks.
Item number four, considering possibly approved, changes to life insurance and vision benefits for newly elected officials. Let me explain to you the concept here and if you want to have any specific questions for our experts, UMR or Higginbotham Insurance, when they get here, they'll be here toward the end of the meeting. Essentially what we've got, and we dealt with this a few years ago and we changed up our policy a bit, but this was brought to my attention by a couple of our newly elected officials. And our life insurance and our vision benefits have some lag to it for a newly, for these newly elected officials. The life insurance doesn't go into effect, can Carl or Annette, can you tell me what that is? It's at least 30 days.
I wanna say it's 30 to 60 days.
It's 30 to 60 days. So rather than, and that's a, this is something that we can control, it's not a decision that the life insurance makes for us or not something that we're forced into, but what I want you to be aware of, that these newly elected officials don't have immediate life insurance coverage the day they start and they don't have immediate vision benefits the day that they start. So either you're okay with that and want to leave it the same, or we can tell Higginbotham and UMR that we would like to align these the same as our health insurance, which does take effect on day one, unlike regular employees that have that lag. So very simply, do you want to have changes made to our policies where a newly elected official would have insurance coverage on day one as well as vision benefits, or just leave it the same? And if you're not ready, we'll table it and we'll ask Higginbotham and UMR when they get here.
I feel like we oughta start on day one. Of course, I'd be a little shocked. I'd be a little biased on that, I may not even vote on this. But basically someone that would be in law enforcement or one of our judges or something, they have a little more dangerous job than I do unless I get run over or something in 90 days, so. I'm trying to stay alive till I get my life insurance.
How much money are we talking about?
What's the difference?
How much more money?
Well, the life insurance benefit that we offer of $50,000 is, you know, do you, do you begin that coverage now or do you wait 30 or 60 days? I don't even know what the life, what $50,000 worth of life insurance is, but it can't have a very high cost. When somebody of our vintage can get a million-dollar policy for between $1,000 and $2,000, I would imagine this $50,000 worth of life insurance is, you know, $100, $200 a year at most, but when we do it as a group, it's probably even less than that. So when, you know, again, it's not a matter of how much it's gonna cost you, eventually you're paying for it anyway, it's just that do you want to speed up that gap that we have right now so that they're covered on day one?
And then the other thing is, employees do have to wait. The employees do have to wait. We don't stop the employees.
Well, I think the logic there is, you do have turnover and you have periods where you're evaluating that new employee and to.
Basically, they're on probation.
They're on probation during that period of time, whereas an elected official, the assumption is, you know, they're here for at least that four years. So that's why the difference in those two coverages.
I'll make a second on that.
We don't have a first yet.
Out of the, oh, okay. Out of the 37 counties that are our size, between $25,000 and $50,000, we have the highest 1, 2, 3 elected officials out of the 254 counties in Texas and the 37 that's our size. So I don't think we need to spend any more money. People running for these offices know what they pay and they should, I don't think we should change it for the newly elected this year or any other year. That's my opinion.
Okay. And you do understand that eventually they have this coverage, we're just changing the timing on it?
Right, I understand that.
Okay. All right, well, I've either got a second or I've got a motion here. Did you make?
I'll make a motion that we start it on day one.
Okay. I don't know how long it will take to make that conversion, we'll have to ask, but I imagine it would be, you know, a signature could get it done. So I have a motion to move up life insurance and vision benefits for day one coverage for newly elected officials. That motion's made by Commissioner Fitch, seconded by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
All right, so we have a 3-1 vote there. Item number five, open review, possibly approved bids for a new oil distributor truck. And I understand that Commissioner Fitch was telling me about this. And will you explain this as carefully as you did to me for everyone so that they understand what's going on here? This is a tech, this is a buy board bid here, not a sealed bid.
So I'm new to this, so what I do know about this bid is not too many companies have this brand of oil distributor equipment that would be mounted on the truck bed, this Ettnair brand.
Yeah.
Okay, distributor. So I went through RB Everett Company and used him before, he found the truck, it's a Freightliner, already put together and ready to go in Austin. The amount is $191,355. We already, what we use now is a trailer that was bought. And I guess it was put together, everything new on it when we bought it. It's a 1,000-gallon tank where this truck is, the standard is a 2,000-gallon. And we were gonna trade in the trailer that we use because we, using a truck with the chassis on the back, with the oil distributor on the back, it's just so much more efficient. It's easier to use, a lot less stuff to keep up with, keep working. We were gonna have to buy a new truck to pull that with, with air. Anyway, we've been using one of Jimmy's dump trucks that has air on it and then that shorts us a dump truck hauling gravel. So we were gonna be out of truck anyway. So we were gonna trade in the trailer and this particular company didn't, wasn't interested in trading in the trailer, taking a trade-in. He recommended a few auction sites that use, that mainly take in governmental type equipment, we might could auction it. And then it was brought up that we may use that trailer for sure for spraying and fogging the roads, prepping them with a tacky primer on the roads before we do seal coat. So we can still use the trailer that we have too. And this, what I come up with, is pretty expensive, but we knew that before we started. When we bought our new reclamer machine, I'm liking that, we're using that a lot. We were also looking at another packer and then this machine right here and then that's it for county-wide mutual equipment that we're buying, that I know of. So that's what I came up with, fellas. What y'all got?
Well, somebody explain to me how we got to the point where we're here talking about replacing a piece that we bought less than two years ago. I don't, I don't understand. We've got a sprayer that's doing the same job, granted it's half the size, but we have a, apparently we thought that was the right decision at the time. What has changed in two years where we feel like we need to already upgrade a two-year-old piece of equipment that sprays, that sprays oil? Wouldn't hear something.
No, it's a, it's a matter, just a matter of convenience and it wouldn't be anything wrong. I personally and a couple of the roadhands think that we might consider, see how we do this year, working as a group without the, we voted not to have the unit system. If we don't work together, we're gonna have, we're not gonna do a very good job anyhow. And I think that we, it's possible that we should maybe wait a year, because I think we paid about $90,000 for that thing, that trailer, and they don't even want to take it back or trade in. That bothers me.
It's true, we could use what we got and try it one more year or so, see what we think. I mean, it was, it was just brought up in one of our meetings, that was a planning meeting and so we pursued it and I was shocked, I thought this truck would probably be closer to $150,000, $175,000, just guesswork, but it is expensive for now.
Well, the bid is from Freightliner in Austin. I'm a little confused why Freightliner would do the bid.
Yeah, that RB Everett, Udo Burch is the one who got me this bid, so it's actually, this is the price on it, but it will be through RB, RB Everett and coming out of that Freightliner because he found that truck already put together, I guess. So.
Just something to think about.
Yes, so we could, we can wait and see what we want to do and if we do good, since our trailer is new, I don't think we're gonna have any problems with the equipment that we have on the trailer. We just had to sacrifice, come up with something, what we're gonna pull it with, so.
Hopefully we have, you have a new truck.
Yeah, I have one.
We're there, so we're gonna have.
Hopefully we'll have those dump trucks by the end, so we could do that.
So we're gonna have a total of three trucks that could pull our existing trailer?
We should, yeah. If we get everything in line. We'll swap them out.
Well, for this to come to a, to a vote consideration here, there must have been some consensus amongst you to go out for bid on a new oil distributor truck. What are y'all's thoughts on this?
We were just trying to figure out a better way to, they said, we're going to have another truck to hold the, a secondary truck to have, you know, like you said, the oil and everything, because that way it won't be getting us behind putting it out. But we have, we got two smaller oil trucks, I guess, Jimmy had one, John had one.
No, not a oil truck.
Just a oil truck. But that's what we were trying to figure out, what the best way to put this down.
I really, not, if you threw, I'm sorry. But anyway, I think that in our, in the workshop, we were, put them in priority order and first was a reclamer and then another packer and this was number three on the list of needs of wants. I should put, they're not wanted. And that, that's how it got up there and, and I don't know.
Well, was the motivational purpose to increase our capacity to lay down the oil, or was it, we don't like that equipment that we bought two years ago and we want to replace it?
It was, the thing about it, it, they had to wait some because of the trailer bringing the oil to.
You run out of that 1,000 gallons, you gotta shut down and go back.
This would give a little more time to, for the other, rest of the crew to be working.
That's the reason I got.
And if you'll remember, Roger and them come, come to us wanting distributor truck, but decide, we decided on this because it was so much cheaper. Isn't that right, Phillip?
That is correct, yes. And then, you know, if we had more, we're still gonna have to shut down and wait for the oil to fill up anyway and/or wait on the trucks to get there also, you know, that thing. So the wait time is still gonna be exactly the same, just gonna either wait on the truck or wait on the oil to load, just because of the sheer manpower that we have.
So you can be shuffling those two trucks or the trailer and then this rig under consideration while you're laying down?
Focus of the time, sorry.
If we were to purchase this, then you could go and be refilling the 1,000-gallon trailer while you're spraying with this one and vice versa?
I think they were, what was planted on there and of course, I haven't been in a lot of conversations that y'all have, but I think they were just gonna use the trailer for fog sealing and for priming after we get the road tore up and then laid out. We have two other trucks that we use to haul oil to the distributor. So the other distributor trailer that we were, that we're using now, they was gonna be using it in a different capacity instead of chip sealing it.
So this rig here, this $191,000 rig, doesn't have to leave the job site to go get oil?
The trailer did.
Okay.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we just shuttled the oil to the trailer also.
With other vehicles?
The other two trucks that, well, John's got one in.
And then you transfer it to this when it's, when it arrives?
That's correct, yes. And in the haul, they haul around 1,400 gallons.
And the big difference is the trailer's 1,000 gallons and the truck is 2,000 gallons, so.
Okay.
That makes the shuttling a little more, so we'd save a little time in that area.
Well, and that's what I was, it was really not gonna save that much more time because even though we put out the oil, we still have to wait on the dump trucks to get there with rock. So you're rarely, you just transfer one hangup for another hangup.
Okay. How many, under ideal conditions, how many days a year would this thing be spraying?
Through the chip seal season, if, which is, some of it's made through.
May, June, September, in September.
Now, we can chip seal on those other, outside of those dates, that's just the recommendation that tech stock goes by, you just have to catch the weather correct.
So five, six months a year, this thing will be running? It's not something that's seldom used?
That, yeah.
And we originally wanted the truck originally, but $191,000, we felt like that was pretty substantial and then we had to take, if y'all remember, we used the money out of the chip seal budget fund basically to buy the equipment that we needed to get rolling in it.
We need to clarify that before you get ready to seal coat a road, you're, it takes several days or a lot of work. So the actual time of seal coating, when you say the six-month period, is not, not very many days, one or two days a week, or three out of that. Because the rest of the time, we're gonna get the vehicles prepared to be seal coated.
That's true.
And that takes a lot longer than the actual seal coat process.
That's a true statement. It lasts through. It lasts through the rest of the months of the year, we can prepare those, to get them ready, and then we can have several weeks of chip sealing going on, you know, that type of thing. To do like a mile or two miles of road, it really doesn't take all that long. Maybe half a day, a day, something like that.
We're running out of money. Way before we run out.
How much money, do we have enough money to seal coat all, seal coat these things?
No, we have a lot of money.
So, they're not gonna be using it every day, we could do a lot of money.
Sounds like a lot of money for, we already have a trailer, let's just use what we got, and if we need to come back to the table later, we're not, if it's not gonna work out for us, we'll do something else, so... I'm making a motion, we table this distributor truck right now.
Motion's made by Commissioner Fitch to table the decision to purchase a new oil distributor truck. Seconded by Commissioner Applewhite, all in favor, say aye. Well, I didn't mean to rain on your parade, I just wanted to know more.
No, it's just my job to get the bids in and discuss it. This is our meeting place, so I'm good with it, I'm happy with that decision.
If y'all get to a point where you think you need to bring this back up, we've tabled it, let me know. All right, thank you for the explanation. Item number six, open review, possibly approved bids for the purchase of a dump truck, and precinct one and two are both needing a dump truck.
Oh man, we've got some action.
Selfie start opening those. Come on. Yeah, give you those up, just kinda go down the line.
Truck two, so.
All right, just keep them, just keep them together in your envelope. Get these mixed up. And these are all for new dump trucks, or not necessarily?
These are new.
These are new. Okay, I'm gonna start here, this is from Freightliner of Austin, this is a buy board price, we've got a chassis base model selling price of fifty-one thousand eight ninety-two, a chassis optional equipment price of thirteen-two, one-year towing, I guess that's warranty, two hundred dollars, and then a warrant, ten-foot, six-to-seven-yard dump body at twelve thousand four, a buy board fee of four hundred, that brings our grand total to seventy-eight one fifty-two. This is a twenty-twenty, brand-new Freightliner M twenty-one oh-six. So, equipped out as you've specced, seventy-eight one fifty-two on a twenty-twenty Freightliner, that's Freightliner of Austin. Anybody else ready to go? All right, Commissioner Parker, what have you got?
This is presented by Southwest International Trucks Incorporated of Arlington, Texas. This has got the, all the vehicle specs here.
Well, I'm gonna suggest we just run through the prices and not make a decision until y'all have studied them carefully, but we could make a motion for, once you have got a chance to look at this, to approve the purchase, but let's just kinda run through generally what we've got.
Okay, the price here is seventy-seven four twenty-five twelve, that's delivered with DOT and ready to work.
What brand of vehicle is that?
International, yeah.
Twenty-twenty or twenty-nineteen or what?
Does it have air? Did the Freightliner have air?
Yeah, check it, see if it had air on its Freightliner there.
You'll have to do that for me. In the tires, it does.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a twenty-twenty.
Twenty-twenty international?
Did you say seventy-seven four twenty-five?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's happened to be, or just, just the truck itself?
That's total.
Oh, he's got it. I'm just gonna put it back in here. Don't you wanna hand me that back?
I believe it, Eric just got air ride on it.
Air ride, air brakes.
Okay, so Jimmy, keep that one and give to Carolyn when we're done.
Okay.
All right, here is from Arc Tech's Truck Center, Texarkana. This is a twenty-nineteen international forty-three hundred, four-by-two, six, seven-yard dump truck, leadwell body, twelve-k front axle, Cummins six-point-seven, Allison six-feet automatic, seventy-seven thousand even, per my, special notice, per my discussion with Mr. Hoffman, if a package of two trucks are purchased, we will discount each truck by one thousand dollars. This includes a new or used international forty-three hundred with a leadwell, six, seven-yard dump. So, that is Arc Tech's Truck Center, so make a note of that, your seventy-seven thousand dollar price.
Seventy-seven even?
Seventy-seven even, could be seventy-six with the purchase of two, and that is a twenty-nineteen.
It had a leadwell bed on it.
That also is a twenty-nineteen international, not also, but that is a twenty-nineteen as opposed to a twenty-twenty. Okay, so we'll put that together. Phillip, I assume you've specced that one just like the others?
Yes, sir.
Even though there's not, not any other detail with this one?
Well, I've got a Rush Truck Center in Dallas, Ford F-750 with that six, seven-yard leadwell, bed on air brakes, and it is seventy-eight eight eleven fifty-eight. Seventy-eight eight eleven fifty-eight. That's a two thousand nineteen Rush Truck Center Ford F-750.
What year was it?
Two thousand nineteen.
Where is Rush out of?
Dallas.
Dallas?
Irving Boulevard, Dallas, yes.
Okay, that's four vehicles, who's ready for another?
Danny, you ready? Gee Hurst four motor.
Who?
Gee Hurst four.
Peggy's Hurst.
This is just, I guess, the truck only, didn't have the bed on or anything, the price on it. The truck's by itself is sixty-one nine ninety-nine.
They didn't give a bid for the?
Bed, no.
How much is it? What size?
Seven fifty, two thousand nineteen.
Ford, what is it?
Two thousand nineteen, seven fifty.
Ford.
Fifteen for the bed.
Okay, so we'll have, we don't, we're not comparing apples and apples there, we'll have to...
Here's a, here's some apples to apples, a two thousand nineteen Freightliner from Lone Star Truck Group in Temple, Texas, and this one rigged out with the bed and all is eighty-three thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Got a better stereo?
Maybe.
Lone, Lone Stars?
Lone Star Truck Group in Temple.
Okay. What brand is that?
It's international.
International.
I think it's a Freightliner.
Oh, wait a minute. It is a Freightliner, I'm sorry.
What year, what?
They handle Freightliner.
What year, what year is Freightliner?
Two thousand nineteen.
Okay. All right, who's next?
We got Price International, same as, same as the one that I had. Yeah, but I can't find the price on there.
This is just the specs.
The one that I had was on the very, at the very back, where the price was at, very, very last sheet. Who, who is that with?
Price International?
Price out of Tyler.
Yours is Price out of Tyler also?
No, mine was out of Arlington.
Arlington?
Arlington? Yeah, it was, I can't remember the name of it, I didn't write the name down here, but...
I vote Price.
Southwest, it was Southwest, out of Arlington.
Just not seeing a price on there, huh? A bid with no price?
Yes, sir.
Nothing on the back, back of those sheets?
It's free, that's all that came out.
Anything on the back of those papers?
You can call them, I keep them up there. We got a table, so you can call them.
Yeah, I got the price. Seventy-four two forty-eight.
Seventy-four, two forty-eight?
A two forty, seventy cents.
What does that get us?
Price International of twenty...
Yeah, what, what kind of truck does that get us?
Twenty-nineteen international.
A twenty.
It's a twenty-twenty.
Here's a, here's a, he can't deliver to July and August, and we'd be, summer would be nearly over, we'd be in trouble without that one. Does he have a time?
Well, can any of these guys deliver a twenty-twenty yet?
I, I was told by most everybody I talked to, bidding that we're gonna, there's gonna be a wait time to get these trucks, for four to six months.
Really? But Gee Hurst didn't do that, huh?
Unless, I didn't talk to them, we did talk to Peggy's Hurst.
Freightliner of Texarkana did.
We were, we were in October, and it hadn't arrived yet.
Okay, what do you wanna do here? Do you wanna go over all these bids, find out what's available, when it's available, how it's equipped, and make your approval? In other words, you wanna approve it now in court, based on the outcome of your investigation into these bids, or do you wanna postpone until next meeting?
For instance, Arc Tech's, really, the only, we really do need air brakes, and Freightliner, they had the one that was cheaper, I mean, competitive, didn't have them. So, the next one up was higher, and, and I think that it does specify on this international, this one out of...
Well, everything you've got here is within four thousand dollars of each other, except for Peggy Hurst on a truck only, and Lone Star's Freightliner. One was sixty-one nine, and the other one was eighty-three six.
Sixty-one nine, it cost fifty thousand dollars, that'd be seventy-seven thousand.
That puts it right in line with the rest of them. So, my suggestion is, if you're ready to buy this, that you approve the purchase based on what you determine to be the best package, availability, timeframe, equipment, et cetera, and then you place that order.
Make a motion to do that.
Okay, motion's...
That's to approve, right? Approve the purchase, and we'll figure out that.
Approve the purchase after you all have examined these seven bids and decided what's the best purchase, not necessarily the cheapest, but comparing what it is you want, making sure you've got them. So, Commissioner, okay, Commissioner Fitch made the motion. Commissioner Fitch makes the motion, Commissioner Riddle seconds it, and that is to approve the purchase of the best package as presented by these seven bids, comparing price, availability, and options, and brand.
It should take about five to ten days for that international.
So, you're, you're thinking one of, that one of these is gonna be available pretty quickly, and we need it pretty...
Five, ten days.
Yeah, and we need it pretty quick.
For the one that are for Texas.
So, you're not gonna consider something that takes July or August?
Next week, we'll buy two of them for...
Seventy-six?
Seventy-six thousand.
That's the two thousand nineteen international.
Now, that's the same company that has our, the used ones, that was, that we tabled earlier for less than, right around forty thousand dollars, forty-eight thousand, I think is what it was, forty-six or forty-eight. But, it had a hundred and fifty thousand miles on it. A bunch of international trucks, they'll run forever, I think. Dana still has one, and they have had well over two hundred and fifty thousand miles on it. I think the ones that we still have had, just well over a hundred thousand, a hundred nineteen thousand. So, it's something to think about, if you wanna spend an extra thirty thousand dollars. You know, it has the new bed on it, and the difference is, is this the truck and chassis itself.
Well...
I'm not recommending, I mean, I've been around it a long time, y'all, and it's, it's thirty thousand dollars, it's a lot of money. We could almost buy two used ones for what we're spending on a new one. And, and, you know, it's y'all's decision, but I'm just trying to...
No, I appreciate that, no, I appreciate that.
It's kind of, you know, it's an overall look at things, you know?
We keep them a long, long time.
I mean, 'cause they're actual trucks, they're built, and, you know, with the use of what we put them through, you know, type things, and, and they, they last a long time. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a hundred miles on a truck like that is actually nothing.
Would the four of you need to put your heads together, along with Phillip, to make this decision, and if so, we either do your schedule some additional time, or we can continue this meeting for twenty-four hours till tomorrow, or you can gather back up?
You know, precinct one and two, this, there'll be their trucks and everything, so everyone's gonna have to be...
Yeah, that's a good point.
Me and Mr. Riddle could make this decision, and we're leaning towards that seventy-six thousand dollar one from Arc Tech's.
The two of you can, then it's just gonna be the two of you making this decision then?
Check availability and make sure, spec that, just like we want.
I just checked on availability, it's five, ten days.
Okay, so they have, five, ten days, it has air brakes, that's the truck we want. That's not, that's what I've been looking for, so I, I'm making a motion to buy two of these trucks from Arc Tech's.
I'll second.
Let's get to the chase.
You wanna replace that other motion?
Yes. Make a motion, we strike that.
Why don't we leave the motion in place, and you all get together, just look, look over these one more time?
Okay. You're safe and sorry.
Yeah, better safe than not, gonna get in any quicker if you, if you look at it a little bit more.
We'll do it.
All right, thank you. Item number seven, considering possibly approved, the purchase of a vibratory compactor. I don't think we've got any bids yet, Commissioner Riddle asked that this be put on there, and if we're ready to purchase a vibratory compactor, then we need to either get the buy board price...
Right, right. We gotta vote on that last one. We just gotta second the motion.
The first part we didn't vote on either?
No, sir.
Okay. The original motion on the previous item, which was to approve the purchase after deciding which of these was the best package, all in favor, say aye. Okay, now vibratory compactor, Commissioner Riddle, did you say you have a buy board price?
I do.
Okay, do you feel the need to go out for additional bids, or are you comfortable with that buy board price?
I'm comfortable, because of the guarantee, these, these are guaranteed for three years, or the, the main parts of them, three years or one thousand dollars.
Okay, tell us what you've got.
Well, I've got a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, we just bought the, it's got thirteen, or eleven hundred and fifty hours on it, it's used.
Two thousand thirteen, eleven hundred and fifty hours.
Two thousand fifteen, I'm sorry.
Two thousand fifteen, what's the brand?
Cat, dog.
Cat?
And it's, it's just like the one we have, and it's interchangeable parts, and like the pad foot, we, we don't need to buy that, we can take, we have one... And like the pad foot, we, we don't need to buy that, we can take, we have one, it would come with the first one. And we, we bought them separate, I think, the, the grid, the crushers, is, is, well, it's thirty thousand dollars, and they're gonna put one on, and that's included in the price. Delivered and, it's got a total thing, and I, according to all of us in the workshop, we all think that's our number two item besides a reclamer. That's the next-
So here you've got a used one that's four years old, eleven hundred and fifty hours, cats, the brand, buy board, price, so that we don't have to, uh, obtain additional bids?
Right.
All right.
And I'll make the motion, we accept it.
Motion's made by, what is the price?
One twenty-six.
Even?
I have it here somewhere.
Is that the grid shell on it also?
Yeah, he redid it, took the pad foot, uh...
Motion's made by Commissioner Riddle, the purchase of two thousand fifteen Caterpillar vibratory compactor.
One twenty-six-five.
At one hundred twenty-six thousand, five hundred dollars.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item number eight, considering possibly approve the purchase of a backhoe for precinct three. That's your turn, Dana.
Well, like I said, uh, we're gonna, we got to look at our backhoe, and it's got a lot of wear and tear on it, and, uh, the front, the differential's finna have to be replaced on it. Pretty expensive, and, uh, like I said, it's, uh, got, I don't know, quite a bit of irons on it. And, uh, it's, you know, it's been in the shop more than it says it is on the trailer, so. Because it goes down, it's gonna be down for a while, like four-wheel drive, or differential on there.
How old is it?
So...
Roughly?
It's a, two thousand five.
Two thousand five, okay, so it's gonna be, you would sell it?
No, you know, we probably just keep it around, we, we're having to shuffle, like, loading the stuff right now, and it's, we're getting where, you know, we're, like his, his down now, we don't have any, we'll have to take our backhoe off.
So you're gonna fix it and keep it?
Right.
Then you need to.
Right.
All right, so we need to go out for bid on this, or do you have buy board price?
I'm gonna go out for the buy board, just go and get-
Okay. So we need a motion that enables you to go out for bid on a packhoe?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You make that motion.
You make it in.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Commissioner Applewhite makes a, uh, motion to go out for bid for the purchase of a backhoe for precinct three.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Parker, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, through, through buying?
I hope so.
Hmm, me too. Item number nine, discuss insurance coverage for road equipment. Uh, Nanette brought something to my attention, and Nanette and I met with, uh, Todd Kiesel from Texas Association of Counties on, was that Thursday or Friday? When did we do that, Thursday? Thursday, we talked about a few things, but one of the main things we talked about, and I think we'll give credit to Nanette for finding this, but we realize that we really do not have, um, insurance coverage on our road equipment. And we're, we had talked at one time about, well, this stuff's not gonna get stolen, it's not gonna get wrecked, it's on and on, but whether it's an oversight or whether it was intentional, we just want to bring it to your attention, uh, how affordable insurance coverage is for our road equipment. And this is stuff that's out constantly on the, on the roads, that doesn't stay in one particular place. It's inland marine-type coverage. And what was the price? It was like thirty-five cents per hundred dollars of value. And what Todd was saying, the things that you should consider, and he gave us several examples of some tragic losses to other, uh, counties. You know, if something were to fall off of a trailer while it was en route to the job, that is not covered by whatever coverage you have on your haul truck, or the trailer that it is riding on. You would, you would have zero coverage there. Uh, something catches fire, uh, and burns up, if something is stolen. So these are the oddball-type situations that come up, but nonetheless, we've got a lot of nice, expensive, or will have a lot more, nice, expensive equipment that we should consider, uh, this coverage for. And again, thank you, Nanette, for bringing this to my attention, I was not aware of this, and maybe you all weren't either. So it would be very simple to add this, approximately thirty-five cents per hundred dollars to cover your traveling road equipment. I don't have a, uh, action item on here, but I just wanted to know if y'all were aware of this, if you're okay with not having the coverage, if you want us to pursue coverage and get a quote for you.
I think we need a coverage.
I think we do.
Just protection of us, you know, as a county.
Okay.
I believe we need it, and, uh, Nanette gave us a list of our equipment to go down and kind of prioritize what we wanted insured, so I think it's a good deal.
And if I'm not mistaken, Nanette, the, the tag stuff, like our trucks and stuff, they're already covered, so we don't have to worry about that, but it's our, our equipment, like our blades and our backhoes and things like that.
Okay.
This is not anything twenty, this is what is on your current, uh, assets, where you got, where you, as well, have, um, determined if any of those items, um, need to be moved here in precinct for, for emergency, and added to, uh, mobile equipment, or just so that you would be aware of where the shared assets are gonna sit in nineteen. And, um, we've added, as new equipment is coming on, we will add it. The other comment that I would make is, much like our vehicle insurance, they set a rate for us at the beginning of the year. We give them the listing. You can add equipment throughout the year, there is no additional cost. For the additions, they just revalue, you know, the annual, which is also a benefit, because most of the time you add, they actually were bringing them, but from the way mobile equipment works, much like the vehicles, when you add it throughout the year, they insure it, and it'll turn up at the end of the year, and we're using.
What would you like for these guys to do, to mark up their copies and return it to you? Is there, is there any indication on here what precinct some of this stuff goes with?
That's the perfect. The stuff that went with the twenty, obviously, this is gonna need to be moved out of twenty. To go back to the, y'all might have to identify which pieces need to go back to four, or three, or two, or one. The only other equipment is gonna be kept in nineteen, and that's the shared equipment. But I do need y'all to, to identify of the shared equipment, what you want to insure. Of the twenty equipment, tell me first off, which precinct needs to go back to, because we'll move it back to wherever precinct needs to go to. And then of the equipment in your precinct, which pieces you want to insure. I don't, I don't think everything we've got we want to insure, but maybe you do. Go ahead.
Where I have discussed with you, and I've given out the information that each of the commissioners, um, for instance, um, where to say free, add equipment, the value of which was, like, you think, oh, yes, we need to insure, then all of them, a piece of equipment, by the commissioner said, we need to get rid of, you know, so, they know their equipment, and so that was one of the reasons to let them review it, and tell us what they want. To be put on the mobile equipment, you might have a piece of equipment-
Not worth insuring, okay. All right. So will you all please go through this list within the next week, indicate what you believe is yours, and whether or not you want to insure it? And get your list back to Nanette, so we can get this stuff covered with our tax policy.
Put this here, just, will you just give us, that's just what- All this here is just in the, all this here is just in the, you know, with that.
But even with nineteen, we, we not, if you all look at that and make sure-
Right.
And through the, 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 the cleaning and all that, they do, they end up resigning back on there. So just to verify that your inventory for mobile equipment, or equipment in general, is exactly what you have on hand. So you can update it with the correct information.
Didn't like the maintainer here of mine, it's gone, so I just got it marked up.
Yeah, just indicate on there-
Indicate, and when you turn it back in to-
Put your name and precinct number on the front there, and indicate the specifics of each piece. Okay, Nanette, thanks again for bringing that to our attention, and I don't know if it was an oversight or what, but maybe just an old decision we made that may not still be appropriate for now. Item number ten, considering possibly approve hiring a new elections administrator with a salary adjustment today. Sure hope you approve her, she's begun a couple hours ago. Pam Holmes is on duty over there across the street, and she would like to get paid. Our current, uh, salary for the previous administrator was around thirty-four thousand. We hired in Pam at thirty-eight. I don't know how much money will be left due to the, the amount of time, we did not have anybody in that position. Of course, we're paying Leonard, uh, by the hour while he is over there helping us, but I'm gonna ask that you approve the hiring of Pam Holmes as our elections administrator, and allow Carl to make budget adjustments to encompass her thirty-eight thousand dollar salary, which is a increase, uh, over what it has previously been.
Make a motion, we hire-
Motion's made there by Commissioner Parker, and second by Commissioner Applewhite, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, welcome Pam in. Item number eleven, considering possibly approve opening an account with Texpool for the investment of excess county cash balances, so that we can earn a decent rate of interest. Carl, you want to explain that to us?
The, the rates we get from the bank, there was, there's a cap on them. It's a four-year deposit rate contract, the cap's one sixty-five, I believe it is. And right now, their CDs are only paying one sixty-five. They'll give us a CD, there's no cap on their CDs. But that's what their CDs are paying us, one sixty-five, and Texpool's like two twenty-three. So I don't know how much we'll use it, at some point, we may put it all back in the bank, but we're gonna try to move the money around where we get the most interest on the money. I'm asking if y'all let us open up a Texpool account. We've had one before, uh, and we'll have it for a Texpool treasurer myself to sign.
And that's a governmental entity specifically for, uh, counties like us?
County, school, districts.
We don't have any obligation to the bank to leave a certain amount of money with them?
No.
Okay, all right. Let's turn a little bit better interest rate with the new Texpool account, if I can get someone to make a motion there. Motion by Commissioner Applewhite to open a Texpool investment account.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Parker, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number twelve, approve oral and written reports of county officials.
The only thing I'll bring to y'all's attention is on page two of that report. If you look down there at the INS funds, you're gonna see a couple of them are overdrawn. Uh, that's, we, we've already written the checks for the, for the bond payments. We lost the gentleman.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Anyway, we, we've already posted the bond payments that are gonna be made March first, and we haven't got the property taxes for January in the bank yet, when all that comes in from zero out. The other thing I'll bring to your attention is a little bit below that, that Loop Construction Fund, it's got like almost two and a half million dollars in it. We're collecting the last of that nine hundred thousand from them. And then when we get all that money, that money will all go into the INS fund, and that's where it goes. I guess we paid him. I don't, I haven't seen any more bills from him.
Sorry, I stepped out, what were you talking about?
Well, I was talking about the INS funds, if you look on page two, you're gonna see a couple of them are overdrawn, they're really not overdrawn. We've already written the checks for the bond payments, but we won't make them to March first, and we've got the January property taxes that haven't been deposited yet.
What were you asking, Marcelo?
And then on the, on a little bit below that, on the Loop Construction Fund, there's two point four million dollars in there. We've collected mostly nine hundred thousand, I don't think we've collected all of it. Have we got it all now? Okay, okay. The other day we had, didn't have it all yet.
Yeah, we just sent checks last week.
And I don't know, is there still a bill left for me to pay, the lawyer, or have we paid him?
He is working on a bill, I don't know how long it'll take him, but it'll be due.
As soon as he gets that bill and I pay that, I will transfer, I will close out that account, move that money to the INS fund. That's the only bill we have to pay.
Yeah, he's, he's partial billed us along the way, but we're probably nine months behind, uh, on having that bill caught up, so this last one will be the biggest one.
Make a motion?
Motion for approval of the, uh, report made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Parker, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, our treasurer's report is item number thirteen, for your consideration.
Make a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
That motion's made by Commissioner Parker for approval on the treasurer's report. Second by Commissioner Applewhite, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item fourteen, approved budget amendments.
Okay, guys, there are a few of those here. These are, these are all the ones that go, go to the money around nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, twenty-two, and then before we get the money's out to the budgets. I call them emergency budget amendments, because it involved moving money around. At the time we did the budgets, we hadn't had the election, so there wasn't any way to, to know what those numbers need to be, so that's why, that was just one of the conservative budget amendments. I think y'all have seen all these. There's number three, cleaning up, uh, nineteen. Here's number four, cleaning up, uh, twenty. Here's number five, putting the money over in twenty-one. Here's number six, putting the money into twenty-two, which is precinct two. Number seven is to precinct three, five twenty-three. Number eight is to precinct four, five twenty-four. I believe you have seen all these.
Money over the, our, complete budget this year, uh, we didn't have all this.
Uh, it's about six or seven hundred thousand dollars, and that's the money we set aside. It wasn't originally, but it's just coming out of the fund balance in general, yeah.
You was coming, you don't know how much.
Well, I didn't really make those decisions until, after the election, and I don't know what we're gonna do with what we need.
All right. You heard- You heard Carl list out, let me give you a little of those gals. This is, these all are for the current budget year, the 1920 budget year. We've got number.
Three.
Three, four, through what?
Three through eight.
Through eight. Eight's the last one. Okay, I've got them out of order. Budget amendments, number three through eight. Need a motion and approval on those. Make a motion? Motion's made by Commissioner Fitch to approve these budget amendments.
Second.
Everybody should have their.
Second Commissioner Parker. All in favor of these budget amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number 15, signed pay orders and approved bill payment.
Make a motion to pay our bills.
Motion's made by Commissioner Parker. Second Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there are none. Public announcement, item number 16. All four commissioners will be in attendance at the VG Young School for County Commissioners Court in College Station next week, the 2021, or 20, 1920, 21, for annual February education. No county business will be discussed amongst these four while they're there, while they still may be in the same classrooms. Item number 17, we'll do closing comments now. After this, we'll take a brief break. We'll go into our workshop with UMR and Higginbotham to discuss our quarterly performance of our health insurance. And then about 9:30, we've invited elected officials and department heads to come and listen to a presentation on our wellness program. So any closing comments? 9:30, 10:30, we're all running late on that. Closing comments. I don't think I had any, I didn't write any down, so I'm going to pass for a second. Commissioner Parker, anything?
I don't think I've got anything, Judge.
Commissioner Applewhite.
Just a drive. Yeah. I have a few things. It's been brought to my attention of a few building repair issues in the courthouse, the annex, and the Justice Center, and just minor things, a shelf here and there, a tile here and there. And I'm going to be checking into that, getting those, getting it organized with the department heads to get a few upgrades on some maintenance issues on the building that are minor. And I'll be getting with Carl on how to transfer that fund for building maintenance repairs.
Again, these are all minor. You go with what most of them are with me, no, nothing major.
Going tile the entryway to the elevator. It's just bare concrete floor. And repair some tile, a tile job that wasn't really finished. And, or the door was changed out or something at the annex. Going to build possibly a few shelves in the JP's office, JP AGN, and fix a few ceiling tiles here and there. So just get a lot of things knocked out at once.
There's money in the repair budget for the courthouse, so I don't think there'll be a problem. If there is, we have contingency money. But that's what I told Mr. Fitch was, if he's spending very much money, he needs to break it back to court, let's be aware.
Yeah, no, we're going to, like the shelf job for Steve over there.
Yeah, that was pretty expensive if I remember.
Yeah, we're going to wait and bid that out. Yeah, have y'all had a chance to go over that, Steve, exactly what you need yet?
We're going to, Senator.
We're going to, Senator.
Well, I've got a good recommendation on somebody to get a bid from there. All right, anything else? Thank you for doing that. That it?
That's it.
Commissioner Riddle?
I'd like to have an executive session to discuss personnel.
Okay, today?
Sure, sure.
Could we do it at the end of our workshop with our department heads, et cetera?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know that we can do that today since it's not on the agenda. Let's, we'll put that on the next agenda. Anything else? All right. Let's, we're not adjourning yet because we've still got insurance business to take care of and it's big as a devil. There she is. Everybody, I'd like you all to meet Pam Holmes, our new elections administrator. Welcome. How are you today? All right. Got it all down yet?
No.
All right. Pam's probably here for our department heads and elected officials meeting on wellness. We're going to take, please, a five-minute break here to get a coffee, use the restroom, and we'll invite CAPS Insurance in. Anyone here is welcome to stay. Okay, welcome, Chris and Tony and Steve. We're going to begin, instead of going directly into our quarterly review of performance of our plan, since we've got a great turnout of our elected officials, department heads, we're going to just spend a few minutes going over the county wellness plan so that you guys and gals can take this information back and share it with your employees. We have some things coming up in March that Chris will talk about and we want a good, strong turnout there. Just our continual fine tuning of our health insurance plan so that we can continue to give you all the very best possible coverage that we can afford and how you can help us do that. So without further delay, Chris Kaplinger, thank you for being here.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me. So what Tony and I want to.
There may be some watching on video, so wherever you go, just be sure we've got a mic on you.
So is it best to stand over there?
You've got that mic if you want to sit down there.
Okay. So what I'm going to hand out, all of y'all are the department heads that were invited here today. Well, if you will take one and pass around, what I have with me today, may I have a copy, is four brochures that we are going, UMR is going to be mailing to your employees. These will be going out in the mail. And let me just interject this, this is not the final draft that you and Sharon submitted Thursday afternoon, because Chris was not in the office Friday. So we have tweaked some things that Sharon and the judge wanted tweaked, namely, when you get to that last sheet, it's not the Convention Center, it's the Ag Extension Center. If that's the, is that the correct name?
Yeah, the Ag Extension Office, so it does.
I think we have the address right, we just don't have the name of the facility correct. So I apologize for that. But what we wanted to do today was kind of go over this with you all, see if you had any questions, so we can help you answer the questions to your employees once they get. This will be what they get in the mail and it'll let them know that there's going to be a biometric screening. The first one is talking about the Well Health Wellness Program. Why Titus County's putting it in, what it's going to do to benefit them. So it's a really nice brochure, gives them dates on the back. It gives them the dates as to when the program, the Health and Wellness Program as a whole, is going to run through because the parameters are set that if they complete this by August 31st, then they will get a discounted premium come 1-1-20-20. So it's a twofold concept. You get healthy employees, they understand what's going on with their health and their wellness, they take actions to get them better, and then they're also going to get a premium incentive. And let me interject something here. In the past, we've had the incentive to do a wellness visit. The problem with that is everybody's definition of wellness visit is different. So if you went to a doctor, we even had some people that submitted a vision checkup as their wellness visit, which theoretically is correct. But what this biometric screening will do, it will test the same parameters for every person. And UMR will be able to give you something back, an aggregate report that will literally say, you know, 29% have elevated blood pressure and on down the list. And they'll check the same thing for everybody. And she's going to go on to more information about if they're not able to attend one of the biometric screens, they can actually take the form to their physician, and then the physician screens those same things that the biometric screening people have done. So that's kind of where we're at. It's why we're doing this because we've kind of realized that you need to do more of a standardized test for everybody so that there can be more useful data.
Let me add this before we mislead anybody's, everybody's ears perk up when we say discount. We can't discount employee coverage any lower than zero. You won't be getting a refund back. But in 2020, the court will implement a first-time cost for employee-only medical insurance coverage. At this point, we're talking about $100 a month. However, you may, by participating in the wellness program, which is not as painful as it sounds, and we're going to cover that, you'll be able to avoid that $100 a month. Now, I can't guarantee it'll always be that way, but at least this initial year, we're charging you, but we're giving you an opportunity to discount that. And that, what we're asking you to do will benefit the plan and it's just one more tool that we have that's going to enable us hopefully to keep our premiums low and afford us the ability to continue to provide really, really good insurance. Okay, thank you.
So any questions on just the, you know, Health and Wellness flyer?
I have one question, Judge. On that, now, so are you going to do away with, is that kind of like they're doing away with the mandatory where they charge you, basically the same thing where now that it's just going to be 100 a year instead of 25 a month or whatever it is?
No, I didn't, I didn't understand the first part of your question.
You're telling right now that they don't, if they don't go through the process, well, uh. Right, but is that going to replace that? Is that basically what it's going to be?
Not necessar, not necessarily. Of course, these are decisions we can make later on. The biometric screening is not going to be the in-depth analysis by your personal doctor that still is a good idea for you to do. There are some other things that, this is just a uniform way for us to check several vital statistics across the board. Chris will go more in, into that. But it's going to continue to be very easy. I see what you're saying. Are we going to have a double hit on there? I don't know. We haven't thought about that, that scenario. But ideally, everybody's going to participate in the biometric screening and you're going to find out for those that absolutely cannot come on March 5th or 7th, you will be able to go to your doctor and get the same specific information with a specific form that we are going to provide. Now, could you do that at the same time as your annual wellness exam? Yes, you could, but for now, nothing has changed on your requirement to get an annual wellness exam by your doctor.
So we'll have women to do this and the women. Women to do both, there we go.
All right. My office is going to take the place of those.
No.
Do everything.
Yes. Yep. So the next flyer is, it says goal complete. Now, there's two flyers that are green and I separated them because I didn't want to confuse anyone. The one that says goal complete your CHRA stands for Clinical Health Risk Assessment. This is a, an assessment that members can go online and complete. It takes about 15 minutes to do. It asks, do you wear your seatbelt while driving? What, how many hours a night do you sleep? Do you exercise? Do you smoke? Do you, how do you eat? Things like that. It's a good program.
Can you pull that line out, please? We're going to be addressing that one.
Yes, sir.
Tony, will you hand her that one there? So there you go.
So it will ask general questions. I can't tell you how many questions there are. It's, they're really not any hard questions. Again, it's just more like wearing your seatbelt, do you have children? Do you have a spouse? So it's, it, this needs to be completed. The judge during many of the conversations we had did indicate that if an employee doesn't have the ability or want to do it at home on their computer, that he has agreed to you all letting your employees take that 15 minutes to do it on their computer at work. Is that correct, sir?
Yes.
That's a great question. Yep. So at this time, we are doing, the CHRA can, should be done by the employees and the spouses if they cover a spouse. We encourage the spouses to take it as well. But if they don't, at least the employee, we do need the employees to take the clinical health risk assessment. And it can only be done online. There's not a paper copy for that. Okay? The reason for the importance of doing that is that once we do the biometric screening, which is the, on the March 5th and the March 7th, the results of their screening will be uploaded into the health risk assessment and then they're going to have a complete picture of their lifestyle, of things that, you know, it's going to give recommendations of things they can change, things they're doing really well. This is not all about beating everybody up because we don't, you know, eat right or sleep enough and things like that. This is an encouragement to help people understand how to be more healthy with their life. Any questions on the health risk assessment?
Although the spouse participation is not mandatory, we can't force it.
Right.
We want to see every spouse somehow, some way participate in this, whether it's coming to our two-day biometric screening at the Ag Office or whether you get the form filled out by your doctor. If we don't see good participation by spouses, that will undoubtedly lead to higher spouse insurance coverage.
And one of the things that we were not really sure of, and Chris has provided a report this morning, we didn't know how many people had actually registered online. According to the information that she brought, we actually have 79 employees that have gone on the UMR portal and are registered. So that's, you know, out of the 138 total membership, that's actually better than what I thought it was. And 19, or 18 have registered dependents. So I think that's going to be the first step to do this because you've got to go on the UMR portal and actually enroll in that. And we've been begging, pleading, asking that for probably the last five years. Yeah. So, you know, obviously we've got 79 people that did it, but they're going to have to do that in order to complete the, the health risk assessment. And that is hand in, those are the two requirements of the wellness program. Complete the health risk assessment and go either attend the biometric screen or take the form to your doctor. So the rest of the population is going to have to get online and actually register in order to do that risk assessment. Yes, thank you, Tony.
And we will be communicating where we've got gaps with the department heads, saying here, employee number one, two, and three still need to get online and register. And that's a, that's the same registration that some of us did years ago. This is not an additional registration. Our existing password will work for this.
Absolutely. And it's, it really is a simple process to register. It's umr.com and up in the upper right-hand corner, you'll enter your member ID from your ID card and then you set your own password. And then from there, they'll see everything that they have access to on the website. And one of them will be the health risk assessment. Any questions on the health risk assessment? Then I, we also included a answer, like a frequently asked questions as to why should I take the health risk assessment? What's it mean to me? So this is more of a FAQ for the employees to have, read over, help, hopefully it'll help them understand why they're doing what they're being asked to do. And then the last brochure is about the biometric screenings. And as Tony said, unfortunately, I was not able to attend the call Friday morning that, and so this was updated a little bit. I will get an electronic copy over to, to, who, who could I send that to, to send out to the department heads if they wanted a current copy?
Send it to Carolyn.
Carolyn? Okay, thank you. I'll send this to Carolyn and she can send it out to you all. But we do have the dates and times correct, so we're going to, UMR's going to have a provider here. It's Quest and they are going to be doing the biometric screenings for anyone who shows up. If possible, we'd like them to register in advance and they can set the time of when they want to come because this is what we recommend, a fasting, meaning they don't have their coffee and they haven't had their breakfast before they go and have the finger stick.
In the call on Friday, it was stated that you weren't on there because you were showing up steer at the stock show. But at any rate, you were, but your child wasn't. Carol did mention that they pretty much, she, they're going to have to enroll because anybody that does not sign up on the, and register on the portal will just kind of be the first come, first served.
Okay.
And they don't want to have 50 people there at 7:00.
Right.
And nobody there at 10:00.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
So basically, the, the earlier you are, if you want to be the first in line so that you don't get hungry, you go and, but they will send more, enough people to acco- accommodate as, as many as simultaneously as they can.
Okay, okay.
Okay?
And so... No, it's actually the, to sign up and schedule is listed on this last page under the biometric screening. The link is indicated under the box with the address. It's actually a different, different link than the UMR portal that you need to use, because this goes directly to our provider who's going to be coming onsite and doing the biometric screenings for everyone. Okay? And I've got mine scheduled for Wednesday, and I didn't get mine in until 9:20. So I don't have to, I'll be ugly when I show up for mine, but that's just what we have to do. It's, it's, because the results are better if you don't eat ahead of time. So after midnight, you don't eat, you go in, you take, it's a finger stick, and then they'll draw your blood. Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, I was just going to say, that is why we did two days, so that everybody, there wouldn't be the majority, some people wouldn't have to wait until, you know, all day long to get it done. So you do have two mornings or two opportunities to get it done. And what's the maximum number that they can send? They could send like, you know, depending upon how many people enroll.
Yeah, absolutely.
But that's going to be the key, is that if you don't sign up online, Quest is not going to send as many people to actually perform the screens, and then there'll be more wait time involved.
Right.
So I really think it's really critical that people do enroll online. And just know, you don't, you don't have to participate in the biometric screen. You can take the form to your own physician, but it is easy to, to get it done and get it over with.
When did Carol say the, this would be open for them to start scheduling?
Didn't say that.
Okay. So I don't know when this will be open for them to start scheduling, but I'll take that question back. I apologize for not having that answer for you, but I'll find out, and we'll be able to give Carolyn the dates that she can share with you all as to how quickly they can go out and schedule.
Is there ain't going to be anything private there? I mean, this, even though the, they'll have barriers in between each person, visible barriers?
There's, there's curtains.
Curtain, that's one, yeah.
Between them, but that's about it. I mean, if they wanted to speak to someone, these are phlebotomists, so they're not medical doctors. So they're more just taking your blood and, and things like that. If they had a specific question related to a health condition or something like that, I don't know how much they could, they could really answer those questions for them.
They're not doing heart rate, no clothing removed?
No, no clothing, no.
And it should take...
About 15 minutes at the most. Absolutely. Yep. It really is a quick and painless procedure. The hardest part is that you can't have your breakfast before you come. That's, that's basically what I find to be the most difficult for me.
Thanks for support. For those that may not be able to make it on this day and they want to text the form to their doctor and talk to them.
Remember, you've got two days, though. A Tuesday and a Thursday, 7:00 AM to 11:00. We're really wanting to push their attendance there. But if they can't, yes, we do have an out.
Does, can we complete the doctor's, like, do we do a wellness?
Yes, and that's still considered preventative. So it would still be covered under their benefits.
I'm not a pushover, I think.
Good.
One of the things that Carol did say on the meeting Friday is that the, if you do choose to go send, see your private physician, that you need to download the form from the portal, because it is actually going to have your ID number and the group number, and that way they can track it to you, whether the, the blank forms won't.
Right.
So that's going to be pretty key, too, is just to, and there's going to be a link on that portal to download the physician form, once you're logged into that and in that on the site.
Okay.
No, UMR's portal.
UMR's portal will house the physician form if a member is not able to attend the biometric screenings on one of these two days. This is, we are encouraging spouses to join and come if they can with their, with the employee and retirees, right? Retirees?
Yeah, retirees, yes.
Yes.
And retirees. So, you know, we're, we're wanting to capture everybody. Yes, sir.
Okay, I remember next week, we had a lot of blood work, with the, making sure all that. And I planned for the wellness check up there, too, kind of to have them do a lot of there, and then we could. It says January through October on here.
Right, yeah, the, yeah. So, but what we want you to do is, I, I need to somehow get to you the physician form that we want them to fill out, the specific form. Not, I don't know yet, but I will find out. I don't know why it wouldn't be available already, but I'll double-check.
I can see the saying, if it's going to be up this week.
This week? Okay. I will double-check. If you and I can communicate, maybe give me your phone number or something, I can let you know, or your email, and I can email you and let you know, for sure. I will find out if that physician form is available currently on the UMR portal. Because like Tony said, it will have your specific information on it, already pre-populated. That way, when you send it into that address that it goes to, they'll already know who's for and everything. You're welcome. Any other questions?
And if anybody has, you may have, some employees that have already done your, their routine physical for this year, they've never gone, then they would still need to get form and send it to their doctor and just hopefully their doctor, the tests are done, their glucose, triglycerides, blood pressure.
A1C.
And, and weight.
Weight.
Yeah, I don't think A1C was even in it. But A1C, glucose, right?
Yes, I'm sorry, it is.
So, so, so that, that way, those people will get credit for having done the biometric screen, even if they did it in January, prior to even having this information. They can go back and, and submit it and upload the form on the portal.
So one of the reasons for stressing March 5th and 7th is to maintain uniformity. The further we get from that date, people, the stragglers, the wait until October, they're going to forget everything we've talked about here. They're going to go, well, I went and got my wellness exams. That good enough? No, didn't get the form. You didn't do it right. Sorry, you're going back. So get this stuff done quickly. Take advantage of March 5th and 7th, and then you can forget about it.
Yes, so there will be reporting. It won't be given to you all, but Tony and I are going to get reporting as to who's completed all this information on a monthly basis. So we can look at different departments and share, you know, with you as to, we'll figure out a way through Carolyn to share names so that you can track down the others that haven't done it yet. Because we don't want to miss, as the judge indicated, we don't want to get to the end of October and everybody's scrambling and they miss the deadline. Then, you know, we're going to have some upset employees when the January of 2020 and their premiums are increased.
For anybody that's hired after, I believe we said August the 1st, then they will have access to complete their biometric screen between then and the end of the year, because they will be coming on insurance and will be required to do it as well. It's just that everybody that's a current employee right now has till the end of October. Okay?
And as new hires come on throughout the year, and y'all don't have a lot, but as you do have new hires, this is something that you want to recommend to them. And let them know that they can go and have those done. If they're hired after the biometric screening for onsite, encourage them to go get their, the lab form on the portal, on the UMR portal, and go to their physicians and get that done, and remind them of the health and wellness program. I know that Sharon goes through that as well with the new hires when they come in. Any, any other questions? You probably don't know exactly what to ask right now. Yes, sir.
...
I thought it was 60. It's 60. There's a 60-day waiting, yeah. So all of January, all of February, they should be effective March 1st. So they'll be eligible for the biometric screenings on the 5th or the 7th, absolutely. Yep.
First of the month, yeah. Because we had to look that up during the call and verify it. Yep.
Well, we, I know, like, some of the insurance, like, I'm sort of in danger of, because of February, 28 days.
Yeah, first of the month, that's 60 days. So, where, I have that call.
Oh, so February being 28 days, 60 days actual.
That depends.
Because of February, that's, I'm not on insurance, I can't get that, I mean, I'm just, I have people, so they would know.
Anybody started January 1st, they got to mark it.
Right, right.
60 days after. They started January, any time in January, it doesn't start the 3rd until February 1st, 60 days after February 1st.
It's a date of hire, you do 60 days.
I didn't know that's what they told me.
January, you're on the 5th, and that's 60 days.
Yeah, I mean, it's 30, that's nice.
Wow. Okay. I didn't realize that, that's how it was being followed. Okay. We were just going by the language in the plan document and thinking that... Okay. Good to know. 60 days after the date of hire. First of the month, 60 days after. So January 5th, that would put her April 1st. Sounds like it.
It's not 60 days after, it's 60 days after another day.
Now, they're calling the first of the month.
60 days after.
First of the month, after 60 days.
Yeah, that's, I'm sorry, that's affecting me, but I just thought.
Okay. So to answer your question, then, yes, they would miss the biometric screening dates and be able to do the lab form after April 1st. Well, we were trying to set it, was there a lot of new hires come 1-1? Do we know? Hopefully.
Can we allow for anybody that's enrolled in insurance, even if they're not through with their waiting period, to go ahead and participate?
I'll have to take that back and ask.
That's, it's not that new. There's a list of officials that were hired.
They're on.
Exactly. So then, I don't think it's going to impact a horrible lot of that. See if we can get an exception, just to let them go ahead and do the bad.
We, I will take that question back to see if we can make an exception, if they're in their waiting period, if we can go ahead and still let them come in and do the biometric screening. So if you're aware of anyone, give me a couple of days to get that answered for you, and then we'll let you know. Any other questions?
All right, let's go us one more time to center there. We can't sign up right now because they're on part.
I, it should be up and running this week. I'm going to get you an exact answer on that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
So they can't, their spouses can't, and they seem to get more things in our community.
Right, and the...
I also have to go to UMR, who will answer those questions.
The, the health, the CHRA. So they've got to do two things online. To biometric screenings, that would be my first priority, if I was going to do it prior. Schedule your appointment first, then go in and onto UMR portal and fill out that health risk assessment. That takes about 15, 10, 15 minutes.
The physician's form, Carolyn just tried, she couldn't find a wellness activity shortcut tile yet.
I'll find out from Carol when that's going to be up and running, and I'll let Carolyn know. Thank you for checking, Carolyn. Any other questions? Please, if you have any questions.
As well. They showed us the cell phone version.
Oh, okay. Well, but you have to, you can use your cell phone. However, you have already have to be registered and gone through the signup on your computer first. That's, because we don't have an app. UMR doesn't have an app. So you actually have to go out to an iPad or a laptop or a computer and register on there at the umr.com. Once you do that, though, you can go to your phone, go to Google or Safari, type in umr.com. What I recommend is if you bookmark it, you have a way to, it's called bookmarking, and then it'll show up on your phone as, like, it looks like an app. You use the same sign-in, the same password, the same user ID. And the nice thing about our, our site is, everything that you saw on your computer is the same thing you're going to see on your phone. It's not different. So we, you know, just keep in mind, we don't have an app, so they can't go to the App Store and do umr.com. It's, or UMR, it's not there. But if you've registered on, you know, Tony said, we've got 97 people that are already registered, so they can actually do this all from their phone, or 79, sorry, I reversed it. They can actually do the CHRA on their phone if they wanted to. Be a little smaller print, but those of us that are quite as young as some of the others, you know, might be able to do that. Well, thank you. I appreciate it. If you have any questions or you get a question, have them call UMR, or if you're able to, Carolyn, could I put you on this side? Could they take and send their emails to you and you could work through me? So if you get a question that you're not sure about from one of your employees when you're having a discussion on this, send those emails to Carolyn. We'll get right away an answer back for you to give to the employee. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, Chris, you ready?
I am.
So I brought a, I believe, three reports with me today, actually four. And the one that's on top of your spiral is a fairly new report that I thought you all might find interesting. This is from when your employees have either logged into the UMR portal, or they've called UMR, and what type of calls are we getting? And I, I just wanted you, this was for all of 2018. And as Tony talked about, we use this in talking about the health and wellness. Right below the registration, you can see that we have 97 registered members. That's employees and their dependents. And it's 18 and above. So if someone happens to have a child that's 19 or 20, they might have logged in so that they can see their claims, because after age 18, the parents don't see, that employee actually does not get the ability to see that dependent's claims, unless the dependent gives them access. So the, the results were positive in that manner. And we, you know, we show 138 employees on your plan as of the end of 2018. So we do want to increase as much as we can. Then looking at the application use, this is types of calls or online, you know, they're calling about benefit questions. Now, these are member-specific. This does not include any provider, provider calls. These are your members calling UMR. So you can see benefits, meaning they're trying to call and ask questions about their benefits. Claim inquiry, this is, you know, we've had 465 claim inquiry calls, where if we had more people registered on the portal, they might be able to see information of their claims there. But it, you know, if you still had a question on your explanation of benefits, that's why we have a customer service team. I'm not trying to say, don't call us, because we are there for you all to call and your members to call. Finding a provider, 47. The next one down, live chat. That is a feature that we have available 24 hours a day. And you had 111 members do a live chat with our customer service teams. After 7:00 PM Central Time, our phones actually roll over to the Philippines, where we have another customer service team that answers calls if a member calls. But the live chat is, is in the States, and they can have access to someone 24 hours a day. I was very impressed to see the live chat feature. Messages, meaning that they've called or they've left a message asking for a return phone call. ID cards, needing additional ID cards more than likely, only two people, other insurance. You know, this is the time of year that we do get a lot of calls, because usually in the, what the rule of thumb is, is after 12, 13 months of checking on your other insurance, we then start asking that question again. And so people, your employees, if they have a dependent on the plan, that's where we need to know, does that dependent have other insurance on, are they primary with their insurance, so that the county's plan pays secondary versus primary? Eligibility, you know, verifying that someone is covered, and they've got who they want covered on the plan. They wanted to, they actually... They wanted to, they actually logged in to view the plan documents that we post onto the portal. OptomRx, that's the pharmacy. Very few questions on the pharmacy plan, but we have a few. MyHCE, this is the health cost estimator. This is where you can go into our portal and find your provider, and find out what the services are going to cost you before you have them done. And we've actually enhanced that now. In the past, I've spoken to you all about this, and we've sent out flyers to the members and things, about, it's a tile on the homepage. Well, we took that off the homepage now, so whenever, if you go back up to finding a provider, when members go out and look at finding a provider, and they go out to the portal, and they look up Dr. Smith, right then and there, they can find out what it's going to cost to go see Dr. Smith, and what it's going to cost with procedures that they might know that they're going to have.
And it is amazing, and I know we've said this in the past, but it's amazing, the discrepancy. Jessica in our office had to have an MRI. She was seeing a neurologist in Paris. It was going to cost nine hundred dollars in Paris. It was, I think it was going to cost like thirteen or fourteen here in Mount Pleasant. She found it for two hundred dollars and texted Hannah, by just driving a little bit further. And that is money, that is your money.
Absolutely.
Well, not only the county's money, but the employee's.
Employee's money.
So, we're trying to make it as seamless and as easy as possible for members to really know, it's our version of transparency, because this is their contracted rate. It's not an estimate based on where you live. This is what that doctor, and that provider, and that facility has contracted in the UHC network. So, that's the actual rate that they will see. And then the last one is accident details. Whenever there's a claim that comes in that has the accident details, we need to know, because if it was someone else's fault, we want our subrogation department to get involved so we can capture as much money back from the plan for the claims that we have to pay. Any questions on that? All right. So, now if you go into the spiral binder I've got with me, the first report is our plan activity, it's the PACE report, but it stands for Plan Activity and Checkpoint Evaluation. And.
You got an extra one?
Yes, I do. What we're doing today is, we're doing a full comparison of 2018 as to how it looked to 2017, and I'm going to jump the gun and say, you had a really good year last year. Much improved from the year before, and hopefully you'll see those results as we go through this report. The first page is what I refer to as our dashboard. It's kind of giving you a high level of everything that's encompassed on the other pages that we'll go through, but your enrollment actually increased by five point seven percent from the prior year. You have all members, at the end of December, two hundred and twenty-two members were enrolled in the plan. But the positive was that your total paid claims came in just over a million dollars versus the prior year, you paid out two million dollars, or the plan paid out two million dollars. That's a forty-seven point five percent decrease in your claims cost.
Wow. Big change, huh?
The next box over to the right, the cost breakout. Your overall high-cost claimants actually decreased from the previous year. So, that, when you have high-cost claimants that are not, no longer a high-cost claimant, meaning that their claims have either finished, that member may no longer be on the plan, that's where you see that improvement in your claim cost, because a high-cost claimant is someone that's got a condition that's severe. And the threshold for the high-cost claimants is anyone with a claim at twenty-five thousand dollars or above. But you can see, your high-cost claimant on a per-member-per-month basis was two oh five eighty versus the previous year, that cost on a per-member-per-month basis was coming in at five hundred and forty-three dollars. And even your non-high-cost claimants, the cost decreased. And some of the things that factored into this was, your employees are really trying to do the right thing. The members are staying in network and trying to find the right alternative to care. Key indicators, I'm not going to go into this a whole lot, because we're going to dive into that on page six, but you did have more admissions, and your admission costs were up, but your ER visits actually dropped, and the cost of the ER visits dropped. So, through communications, changing and tweaking of your plan design for 2018 had a positive impact on that emergency room care. Your age demographics, that's on the Other Factors page. Compared to the UMR norm, your age group is slightly older.
More mature.
Okay, more mature, that's a better word to use. And your total discounts, you can see, compared to the UMR norm of fifty point three, the plan is achieving a sixty point one percent discount on every claim dollar that comes Page three is, at a high level, your enrollment counts. So, again, up there at the top left, you've got a hundred and thirty-eight employees enrolled. That was the same enrollment you had the prior year. You added one additional spouse, where the enrollment really increased was on the children. And that's not necessarily a bad thing, because kids don't generally go to the doctor without a parent. So, you don't see a high spike in claim costs when you enroll a lot more children. And younger, you know, helps the demographics and helps keep your claims cost down. Being that said, your average age is actually thirty point nine.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight. Sorry, thirty-eight point nine. I need newer glasses, or readers. And then looking over at your payment on a per-member-per-month basis, and I kind of hit that highlight, medical came in at three hundred dollars and thirty-nine cents compared to the UMR norm, you're below that. Now, your pharmacy was slightly higher. We did make some changes to the pharmacy program, but you still had some higher utilization in pharmacy.
Higher than the norm, but lower than our own.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yep, higher than the norm, but you decreased from the prior year by forty-one percent.
That's a huge change.
I mean, one of the things that was added on the 1-1 of 18 on the pharmacy side was putting in what we call the premium, premium pharmacy drug list. And it, what it does is, it curtails the physician, or even the member, going into the physician's office and asking for that latest and greatest drug that they saw in an advertisement, because we actually exclude those right off the bat. They have to try alternative medications. So, when I presented that to you all in, for renewal on 1-118, at that time, there were only about seventy-six drugs. There's now a hundred and sixty. So, each year, we are looking and trying to stay one step ahead of all of those prescription drugs that are out there on the market, brand-new, when there was already something that was being used, and for most people, it still works.
Have we had any employees that have just found this to be a horrible thing, because we've denied them that specialty.
We haven't heard anything.
Okay, good.
No, so I think it's been a positive. Looking at page four, where was the spend from? As I mentioned on the first, or page two, your admissions actually did increase by a hundred and thirty-three percent. So, your high-cost claimants that were out there did have to be admitted into the hospital, and they were there, so their costs were significantly higher. Some of that was, some of the utilization was due to out-of-network providers being Outpatient, you know, that dropped quite a bit. So, those that could be, have their services performed on an outpatient basis, they did do it, but it dropped seventy-seven point eight percent. So, obviously, they were, you know, your inpatient utilization went up, so that means that they were significantly sicker than they could be treated for an outpatient. But your physicians, your, this physician line, it dropped forty-six point five percent. That encompasses all physicians, whether they were seeing a patient in the hospital, doing the outpatient services, doctors' offices, ER physicians, any type of physician service falls under this. And what I just highlighted here was, on the lower payment by month, was the month where you had a spike in your claims dollars last year. So, we had some March, May, and slightly higher in November. Which is normally, I normally see more the last quarter, when people have met their deductible, they start going in for everything. So, you really didn't have as huge a spike on that, so that, kudos to the employees for not running out there and trying to get everything done at the end of the year. Page five, now we're looking at, what are your high-cost claimants? You know, what's going on with the plan? And we have three metrics for the high-cost claimants. We've got a twenty-five thousand plus, and you had nine high-cost claimants for 2018 versus seventeen of them in 2017. We had five high-cost claimants. Of those nine, five of them incurred fifty thousand or above in claims dollars versus eight last year. And then you do have, of those nine, there were still two people that incurred a hundred thousand dollars plus in claims for 2018.
But, is that where you're going to segue into?
Yeah, exactly what you're going to say. So, I mean, everything looks really good, okay, but there's, you know, one thing that kind of jumps out, and it just happens to be on those two large claimants, a lot of their services were out of network. All right, so I just did a little quick math when I got these numbers, and, you know, an estimate is that those two claims, since they were done out of network, cost the county about a hundred and twenty thousand additional claim dollars. And, you know, we don't know the circumstances, there certainly may be some legitimate reason that, you know, they went out of network for their particular condition, I'm not sure, but.
Were these surgeries? Were these cancer treatment? Do we even know?
No.
Well, there was one that had a surgery. They're both being followed by our case management nurses. They're, the patients aren't engaged with our case management. They were for a point in time last year, then they quit being engaged. And that's where, by having the case managers and the patient engage with each other, we're able to steer them in network. We're able to say, okay, I understand that you're seeing provider ads, but did you know they're out of network? Let us help you find provider Y, which is in the network.
And didn't you say that climate number one had been engaging with case management until May?
Yes.
And she dropped off at that point?
Yeah.
And after that, everything she had was out of network.
Right.
So, we're not exactly sure of the whole situation there, but we just know that those two top claims were out of network.
Which results in more costs to them.
Yes, it did, so, but.
Right. And, you know, they're still active on the plan. I, I've asked the nurses to reach out again, to try and reengage with both patients, see if we can get them back engaged with our nurses, and try and help them out any way we can.
I'm not sure what that is. It's a blood dissonance or something?
The first one?
Yep. I'm not sure what that is, but anyway.
It's.
Your second one was a coronary disease.
It's pancreas disease.
Oh, it's a pancreas disease.
Another positive out of this is those that are termed, none of those members took COBRA. So, you know, they're within the top ten of their high cost, but none of them enrolled in COBRA.
When they were retired, does it still say terminated? Terminated, is there not a claim at all anymore?
Right. So, like, number three reached age sixty-five, so they came off the plan.
But if they still worked here, then they could be off the plan, right?
They could, if they're over sixty-five, yeah.
Yes, but.
Was that a retiree?
Yeah, number three was, yes.
Yes, okay.
And number eight's a retiree, but they both aged out.
Yep.
But your two, like, five, number five and six, they did not elect to have COBRA. And what that means is, they're not going to continue on the plan and incur additional And then what I looked at is, on the highlighted column, that says CYTD, which is Current Year to Date Paid Pharmacy. Your highest pharmacy claimant, they actually are number five, and they've termed, so you can see, they incurred fifty-three thousand dollars worth of claims in just pharmacy. And I do have a pharmacy report that we'll go through next. Any other questions on page five? Now, looking at page six, this is the report that talks about your admissions, it talks about your ER. So, I want to take a few minutes to talk about your admissions, and you can see that you had fifteen admissions compared to ten last year. So, kind of flipping back to page five, you had, your top claimant, number one, they were admitted twice and had a total of eighteen days in those two admissions. Number three in your high-cost claimant, they had three admissions and were there twenty-eight days for just three admissions. So, the, your total admit days, they were there, your fifteen admissions totaled up to ninety-one admit days, meaning they were in the hospital ninety-one days. And you can see what the total cost to the plan paid on a per-admit basis. What is also concerning is, two people had readmissions. And a readmission means, to us, means that they were released from the hospital and possibility of several things. They didn't follow up with their doctor to take a course of action of what their treatment plan was when they were not, when they were released from the hospital. You know, it could be something that they did incur an infection and had to go back, but a lot of times what we see, readmissions, is that they're not following up their doctor, they're not going to the rehab, or rehabilitation, or their therapies they need to do, they didn't get their prescriptions filled, they're not following their prescription orders. And it caused them to get sick again, and they may have been readmitted, but for a different type of condition altogether, as a result of being admitted the first time. And readmissions tend to be about three times higher than the initial admission.
It could be too, that they just weren't getting better, you know?
And I will tell you that one of them, one of them was a result of not getting better. And it was the number three person on page five.
I can just say that, quick memory, you know, I was in hospital three times. So, I was in hospital once, sitting home, I thought I was going to be better in two weeks. And about a week and a half, I was back in the hospital, and was home a few weeks, and back in hospital again. So, it was just the pure fact that I wasn't getting better, you know? So, so it, these readmissions might not be any fault of the employer that they did incur, you know, it just may be that the condition caused that they didn't go back. So, I can guarantee they didn't want to go back.
No, you're fine. This is good, good information to share. Next column down is your ER visits. So, we have improved on the ER visits. You had four, forty-two of those for 2018 versus fifty-nine. Three of them did result in admitted to the hospital, and only fourteen of them this time around were considered non-emergent. So, I, to be positive, you know, we put Teladoc in first of the year, and 2018, so maybe there was some overlap as to learning how to use Teladoc versus going to the emergency room. And I have not reviewed your January report for this year to see how your emergency room utilization is, so I apologize for that, but I'm thinking positive that more and more people are trying to use Teladoc. And I did bring up Teladoc before, till we can go over really quickly. And your ER paid dollars actually decreased quite a bit, seventy-seven thousand eight hundred ninety-nine versus a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. And then over on the right-hand side, the paid per visit cost went down. And I just highlighted, you know, urgent care utilization. Prior year, you had none, but that also came into play is that there wasn't an urgent care facility available in 2016 and 17. Now they're available, and your members aren't using them. And your average cost on an urgent care is a hundred and sixty-two dollars. Now, the member has a copay. This is what the plan is paying on an average cost. So, that's a good thing. Our last page of the PACE report is your network utilization. Our last page of the PACE report is your network utilization. So if you look over on the right-hand side, that's where we have the current year-to-date utilization. And you can see that, we've already talked, that your discount percentage is showing at 62, 60.2% of average discount on every claim dollar being spent. Now, the in-network utilization went down from 97.7% on the prior year to 94.3%. But keep in mind what Steve said, your two highest cost claimants...
That's dollars, not people.
The 94.3%?
Yeah.
No, that's not dollars. That's how many people are staying in the network versus using providers and physicians out of the network. And that did drop, and it dropped mainly on the outpatient services. And your two high-cost claimants are receiving a lot of outpatient services, and they're out of network. So that's why the drop in the utilization of the network.
And they're paying dearly for that.
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
Is there, out of network, still paying the maximum amount of pocket?
It's, yeah, it's still...
They get their maximum amount of pocket, it doesn't matter.
Yeah. I mean, they're paying a higher deductible, and they're paying more out of pocket, but once they meet that, then it's 100% for the remainder of the year.
If they're really sick, that, if they work out of network, that way, those people can hit their maximum pretty quickly.
But by keeping them in network, the plan, then, that's where it really falls on the plan.
Yeah.
To pay less money.
Sure.
So, but like I said...
I'm saying there's not any incentive, once they...
No, there's no incentive.
There's no incentive.
Unfortunately, there isn't. But I am going to get the nurses to see if they can reengage with both patients, get them to contact the nurses, and, you know, work with them on their care going forward.
See what it is. I mean, like I said, there may be a legitimate reason they're going out of network. I don't know what it'd be with the, you know, the network draw...
And the network is the... Exactly.
But the cost of them out of network is really what happened, I'm a career...
Yeah, probably. You know, which is, if you're really sick, the drop...
Right. If they're sick, you're a little...
One of the things that I'd like to propose, and I, when I was here for your 2019 renewal in the fall last year, that I didn't propose it at that time, because it was a brand-new concept, didn't have enough information behind it. And so, we had it in place now for about four months, and it's actually doing really well. There's no cost to the plan to add this enhancement to your network, but what it's going to do is, it's going to put a little bit more ownership on your members. And what we call it, as you can see down at the bottom where it says primary networks, you have that cost reduction savings program, the secondary networks. Now, if you follow across, it's all negatives, and that's because there were quite a few adjustments on some claims that had come in that fell under the silent networks, but then really they, the providers were in-network. And it was during the contracting time, and our systems didn't show that those providers were contracted. But what it, how this, it's called a cost reduction savings enhanced program. And the enhanced portion of it concentrates on two areas, on ER, and on when they are using inpatient, or even outpatient, out-of-network radiology, labs, or anesthesiologist providers. And what it will do is, it'll set your plan up, that if they, the providers do not fall in one of those silent networks, we're going to pay that claim at a percentage of Medicare. Right now, how that claim gets paid is, let's say, for example, you're inpatient at an in-network, inpatient facility. If that anesthesiologist, which, there are some that are contracted, but probably 80% still aren't, because they're a specialty, and they know they don't have to really be in anyone's network. So we, we don't want to penalize that member for being impatient and doing the right thing, so that anesthesiologist's claim gets paid at billed charges at the in-network benefit. If you agree to put this enhanced program in, and the soonest we could make it effective would be 4-1, so that we have time to code it on the system and capture those claims, that anesthesiologist's claim, if they're not in a silent network, we're going to pay it at a percentage of Medicare, 110% of Medicare, does leave the member open to being balanced billed. But we have, when they get that explanation of benefits, there will be a phone number that they can call and talk to a UMR team member on how to negotiate the balance billed amount. And...
Okay, so they're, they're in an in-network facility, they have no choice over their anesthesiologists...
Right.
Or radiologists, for that matter.
Right.
They receive services, and potentially they could be balanced billed for the anesthesia and the radiologist.
Yes.
I'll be honest with you, I don't like that.
No, I don't like that either, I think I can say so.
Well, and the reason I didn't propose it in the very beginning is because I didn't, I didn't know how the noise level would be.
Yeah.
And now that we have four months of most of our clients doing this, there's been little to no impact from members calling us and complaining about getting balanced billed.
Brother, well, I wonder if they're being balanced billed?
Exactly.
They might not be balanced billed.
Right. But if they do get balanced billed, we do have a support system in place to help negotiate that balance billed amount. Now, we don't, we don't have to put it in right now. It's just, the reason I'm bringing it up is, you've got these two high-cost claimants, number one and number two, that are on your plan. And one of them's, your very first claimant, they're using providers that are not in any of the silent networks. So that member is going to be impacted. It is a spouse, and that's the person who quit engaging with our nurses. So, in my opinion, this is just my opinion, put a little onus back on that member to take responsibility in that, that balance billed amount doesn't go towards the plan. It never would get added back into the plan. Because it's so many things...
I have a problem with that.
It's any dollar.
I have a problem with that, because these, these, the person you're talking about, those people, but when I'm going to a hospital, and a doctor, good, safe, that y'all told me is a network, I don't have any...
Right.
Choice about the other.
Right. But, Carl, like I said, I waited to see what the impact would be, and most providers are taking those payments and not balance billing. Because they realize that they, for so long, they were getting paid a lot of money. And...
That's their problem.
It's, it's something that we're trying to, we're, we're putting this in place because we need these providers to understand and engage, and either get in our network, or they're, they're paying, they're billing sometimes 700% of Medicare.
They know what they're doing.
Yeah.
It's been hard and hard, and they're shaking their head.
It is.
And I just get like 60% knocked off now, you're lucky you get 20%.
Like they're, they're...
And you're out of pocket.
Again, this is just my opinion, sitting here, looking at your plan and all my other customers, and I think they're, I feel like they're taking advantage of the situation.
And it only applies to radiologists, anesthesiologists, and labs?
And ER claims. And those physicians. And ER physicians are the worst culprits. They actually are charging thousands percent above Medicare. I'm dealing with one right now for another client in East Texas, and we figured out they're dealing, they're, they're billing 3,000% of Medicare.
Because nobody owns, nobody owns their own ER doctors. They're all, they're all contracting out of 10 buck, too.
So, it doesn't have to be decided today. I can recap an email, and send it to you, Judge, and let you, you know, present it and look at it, or...
We can make a mid-year change there?
Yes. Yep. This can be done any time of the year, and like I said, there's no cost to the plan. There's not going to be any administration fees.
How is it related to the members? Or is it...
It really isn't. How it gets related is on the explanation of benefit. They're going to see language that says, "If you get balanced billed, please call this phone number, and we will assist you."
Is that even valid?
Yes. And even on the, your explanation of benefits now, you get a, an out-of-network claims that says you may be balanced billed and responsible for this portion. By adding the enhanced program, there's going to be more verbiage that says, "If you get balanced billed, please call this number."
And the state of Texas has a mediation clause that, I thought it was anything over 500, but you say it's any amount...
Right.
That the member can ask to go to mediation, and help negotiate the, the claim down.
I say we implement that immediately.
Can you opt-in and act?
No.
On the off and in?
Right. Yeah, we don't want to back it out once we put it in.
Well, I mean, let's, well, I sort of say, you might want to think about it at renewal for January, or would you want, even want to do that? Once you did it, you did it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Let's go ahead and proceed, vote on that at the next meeting.
Okay. All right. So would you like me to send you an email, and, and put an effective date of 4-1, and...
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
We'll discuss it again and vote on it next meeting.
Okay.
Do you have any way to pull how that would affect the plan?
There's not a lot of data at this time. It's so new, we don't have a lot of data, but I will see what I can capture, and let you know.
You may not...
I know. That's what, I'm getting asked a lot.
You can put it in there, so you can have some kind of measurement of this.
Right.
Can we feel to continue with it? Or is that, or not?
I, and I highlighted, and I didn't highlight, but on my page, your out-of-network claims, you know, you show you paid about $45,000. The majority of those are Teladoc dollars. And again, it's capped at $45, so you have had some utilization in Teladoc. And that's a positive, because it kept them out of the doctor's office, it kept them at work. You'll see that on our Teladoc report when we go through it. If there's no more questions on the PACE report, you can turn to the pharmacy report.
Chris, I've got, me personally, I've got a meeting with SWECO that I really need to attend. Is there anything here that I've just absolutely got to see on this, or can I get with this?
And it is 12 pages, but I'm not going to go through every page, so I can do this in about five minutes, if that's okay? All right. So if you'll turn to page three of the pharmacy report, a couple of things I wanted to highlight, you know, your pharmacy cost was a little, was higher than the norm, but much lower than last year. What I highlighted in areas is your, some things to think about for the future, because you really do have, in what I've seen on most plans, very, very low copays on your pharmacy. But I understand why you do that, and so I'm not, you know, making judgment, I'm just going to point that out. But your plan paid on a per-member-per-month basis currently is at $94.82. Prior year was 161. Our UMR book of business, you are slightly higher on that, on the plan paid, meaning that the plan's paying more money than the members are. Where we see more of the higher copay, so you wouldn't see as much dollars by the plan. Where it's really noticeable is where the plan paid on a NS stands for non-specialty. You're at $74, the plan's paying, versus a $45 on our book of business. And then, on the specialty side, the plan is paying $19 versus 36. So that just means that you have very low utilization in the specialty, and I attribute a lot of that to having that premium PDL program.
Yep.
And just at the bottom of the page, the mail order percentage, look at your mail order percentage, 32.5%. That's off the charts. Our book of business is around 14.5. So that is a great job by the members. They're really stepping up and using mail order.
Because we implemented the thing that if...
Yes, the mail order.
Now, you have to use, you have to use it.
Yep, you have to use it. And that's a proof as to, you know, they listened, and they did it. Skipping down, let's see, page six.
They're not numbered.
Yeah, they are up at the top right.
Oh.
Very, very small print.
Sorry.
And the only thing is, is you've got, diabetes is your number two cost in your disease day, and then number one is inflammatory condition. That's related to that high-cost claimant. And then, page eight just talks about what is that, you know, again, that's the, that's where your specialty drug comes into play. Only one person's utilizing it, but you can see that, no, actually, this wasn't the number one, this was number five. So this person is terminated, that spent $53,000 in specialty drugs. So that's, and they didn't take COBRA, so it's a positive. We shouldn't continue to have that kind of spend in your specialty area. Really, that was all I wanted to touch on, on your pharmacy. It's been a positive. And then our last report is about Teladoc.
Okay, Chris, I've got to slip out here.
Okay.
Remember, somebody close out the meeting with a German, and get the disc for Carolyn. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No problem.
Couple of ideas that I had about Teladoc, just because I want to get the utilization up even more. If you look at page two, you know, you did have on a per-episode savings about $477, with a total claim savings for a year-to-date at $16,960. But if we can get more spend on Teladoc, which is available every single day of the year, even Christmas, and all the major holidays, they are there, and it's, you know, 24 hours a day, then we can even get these savings and utilization even higher. On page three, talks about how many, you know, we've had enrolled. We've had 35 visits, and in only, and now this report is just for December. They don't do a year-to-date cumulative report, but they do have, some of the, some of the report pages do have it. We had one person register in December. We had a big hit in March, where I think that there was some push out there, and then another in October. One of the things that I'd like to possibly recommend is, if we could have Teladoc flyers at the biometric screenings, just sitting there on the table somewhere to have them pick it up. Teladoc is on the ID card, the phone number is, and the copay's on the front, the phone number's on the back. So anything we can do to continually remind members to register for Teladoc, you need to register first versus when you need to use it. Because when you need to use it, it takes about five minutes, 10 minutes to actually register. And if you're not feeling well, the last thing you want to do is to sit there and go through and register everything. Now, you can call Teladoc and do all the registration over the phone. They'll take everything down and fill in your registration for you, then switch you over to a doctor. It's just, if you, you register first, then utilization tends to go up afterwards. How members receive care, we always ask, if you didn't call Teladoc, where would you have gone? And you can see that this is how they registered, or how they wanted to be seen. You know, just like with your live chat, a lot of folks wanted to use the visulat, visulation, meaning they Skyped with the provider. So the visit method, you had 31% that were Skyping. And then, I like...
This is just December of '18.
Yes. Yep, page, yep, page four is. I like page five, because it tells you on the lower, right inside the time of day, the 60% of the utilization was eight to four. Now, you say, well, there, you know, a lot of that was during working hours, but yes, but they didn't leave necessarily. They didn't have to leave the office. They didn't have to go sit in a doctor's office for 20 minutes before they got to see their doctor. They were able to call the doc over the phone, tell him their symptoms, possibly get a prescription already called in, whether they stayed the rest of the day, or they had to leave and go get it. Maybe they had the flu and wanted to get out of the office so they didn't contaminate anybody else. But they were able to do it, you know, productively, is how we, we look at it. On average, it was a nine-minute response time for talking to the patients. And then, page seven is really good details, and it tells the type of prescriptions. Teladoc only prescribes generics. They're required to do that, so they can't prescribe any specialty drugs, they can't prescribe any narcotics, they can only do generics. And you can see what the type of diagnosis was. So, this is the page that tells you where the member might have gone had they not called Teladoc. And you can see that 9%... And you can see that 9% said they would have gone to the emergency room. And even though your emergency room cost went down, it's still going to be $1,800 per person versus, and then, 14% said they weren't going to get any treatment at all, so their condition might have elevated and continued to get worse, and caused them to end up in the emergency room or be admitted.
I have a question. Flonase is over the counter, do they tell them that's available over the counter?
Yes.
Give them a prescription?
Nope, they will recommend that.
Oh, okay.
And the reason I know that is because when I got Vertigo, they recommended something over the counter for me versus giving me, they said, we can write, call in a prescription for you, I'm in a high deductible plan, and that prescription was going to cost $600. So, Dramamine worked wonders. And I appreciated being told that, but they do give them the option of something over the counter. Any other questions? Thank you for your time, I appreciate you allowing me to come out and go through your results with you. Got a few follow-up items, and I'll get right on those, and then, we'll, you know, in March, we're going to do the biometric screenings. The other thing I'm going to bring out in March is flyers, is the Real Appeal Program. That's the weight loss program that we put in last year, still having very positive results from it. So, I'm going to have a set of flyers for that, so that members, as they're coming to get their biometric screenings, may or may not have done their CHRA, knowing that there's some things they need to work on. One of them might be eating better, exercising more, that's where Real Appeal can help them engage in that. So, I'll have those flyers available as well. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Al made a motion to adjourn.
I second the motion to adjourn.
John seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank y'all.